Please join us, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is the approval of the agenda.
I think a motion will approve the agenda. Second?
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, can we add the word concerns behind select board comments? Can we do that? Is that?
Sure. Comments or and/or concerns?
Yeah, it's just a slash concerns. Yeah. Because they're not always just comments. They're going to be taken a little more seriously.
Okay, any others? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Minutes for 12-9 and 12-23, 12-9, already won, do both of them together?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for December 9th.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Minutes for December 9th.
One, it's on the second to the last paragraph on page one. It says, "The data collected from the survey has been sent to Iceland for review." I don't believe that's correct.
Might have been Greenland.
Where are you, Nick, on the first page?
On the first page.
Yep.
Second to the last paragraph.
Look at the last paragraph, in this paragraph.
The second sentence, it says, "The data collected from the survey has been sent to Iceland for review." I don't recall where Mrs. Finnegan said it was going.
I remember.
But it wasn't Iceland.
It was Iceland.
It was Iceland.
It was Iceland.
But I think it will be sent to Iceland. Is my recollection.
So I guess that's, guess that's correct then, right?
Don't forget what I said.
It's going to Iceland?
Country was, yes.
Delay my last. I didn't remember her saying that.
Okay. Anything else on December 9th? All those in favor? Motion for December 9th, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for December 23rd.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens' comments. Janet Curry, Chairwoman of the Planning Commission. Yes, Janet?
So gentlemen, I put four articles about towns outside of the state of Vermont who have requested or suggested moratoriums on solar arrays. I talked about it at the last meeting, brought it up to you. I did draft something up, but then I did a little bit more research. And I think that what I'd like to ask the board is just to kind of review some of the articles. If you have any questions, you can send an email me or give me a call. But what I'd like to do is draft up what I have, modify it a little bit. If there's any changes that you think could be made to it, and then if you would vote to have Jim review it, and then I think you need to speak to council. So, and the other thing is, I just want permission to speak to V L C T, just to make sure that I have the wording correct in the document itself. Reason being is this. This is for applications that are requesting a preferred site. So they have to come through the Planning Commission, and they come to you, and then they go to a regional. Just a couple of things that the board is concerned about, and that is, number one, one issue was raised about technology. These were arrays, stay around for, you know, they say 20, 25 years, but, you know, they there's, as it says, 30, 35 years. The fact that technology is changing so much, and the argument that we're using here is the fact that, you know, when people wanted cable television, they put these flying saucer type dishes in the backyards. And now, clearly, we've gone down to dishes in your garage or whatever, and now everybody's kind of getting rid of that because you can get everything through internet. So, we also want to look at the fact that the solar panels themselves are starting to change in size. They were, they'll quote me, I believe, eight feet in width, and now they're starting to go down to four, four feet. So, and still be able to project the amount of energy that goes into the substations. So, and thirdly, the last one, the board wanted me to express to the select boards the fact, if you look at how cell phones have changed. You know, the first cell phones came out, they were pretty archaic, they were like this big, and had an antenna, and now we're, you know, we're walking around with these things. So, they're concerned about the fact that technology is going to be changing, the fact that there's this inundation with these applications. And so we are requesting an eight-month moratorium. So, as I said, Jonas and I can draft up an energy plan. And again, it gives us party status at the Public Utilities Board if it's necessary. Right now, our town plan reflects the fact that you cannot use primary agricultural lands for a solar array. But, you know, we can put whatever we want in a town plan, it doesn't really have much much weight, and it comes to an objection in either a court or a public utility board meeting or hearing. So, that's where I'm going in this direction. So, the articles that I printed off for you, they're very easy, you can read them probably about 15 minutes, but just shows you that this isn't just something that I just thought of, like other, other towns. Pottstown, New York is one of them, it's pretty close to us, sort of. We're not the only, you know, we're not the only towns or state that's going to inundate with these solar array applications. So, if you would be willing just to review it, if you have any questions, you can certainly, you know, contact me. But I'd like to be able to have it, Jim be the conduit. I want to speak with V L T, I want to just read them off what my draft is, and then have Jim propose it to council, whoever you decide to use.
Questions? Questions to Janet?
I have two in here.
Okay.
First question, Janet, is, and if you don't know the answer, that's okay, because I certainly don't. Does every solar project have to go before the Public Service Board and get a certificate of public good?
Okay, so, I understand your question, but I'm going to rearrange your question a little bit. Not every application needs a preferred site.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah. So, they do have to go through, they do have to go through the channels, I believe, for Public Service Board. But one is one route if it's a preferred site, and one is not.
No, and I understand it's their advantage for us to designate them a preferred site. But in any case, they still have to go through the Public Service Board, I believe, I just didn't know if you could confirm that.
Yeah, because before, with the Public Service Board, my understanding, and it's before I got into zoning, it was more when I was in the legal arena, is even if there was objection, there was neighbors that are objecting to whatever it was, they just kind of could bulldoze it through the Public Service Board. When Governor Scott became governor, he changed that around. He allowed towns to have more say. And he continues down that, continues down that path.
Okay, second question. I heard comments in passing in previous select board meeting, and it was one of the applicants, I guess for lack of a better term, was made a comment about our infrastructure was just about maxed out, and there was going to be a limit to how many more projects could be put in this area because of the substations.
So...
I don't know if you can speak to, do you have any additional knowledge?
Yeah, my comment to that is, until I have somebody from G M P who's sitting on either side of me who says, "We're maxed out," that's, to me, the rest is, it's all hearsay. I want to hear directly from somebody from G M P, and I'm more willing to, if I have permission to call G M P and speak to them about that. I don't know if that's something you'd allow me to do, or allow the town manager to do, it doesn't really matter. But yes, there's this, we've maxed out, and we, to my understanding, we only have two substations in the town of Cassleton, unless I'm incorrect.
I believe that to be correct.
So, for a and transfer station? So, I mean, you know, we have technically four applications in the hopper.
And I don't know if there would be any capacity for the Velco substation on Blissville in Polley, which is a much larger facility, but I have no idea how it's all tied together.
I, beyond my pay grade.
Same here.
That was kind of our question the last time we were here, is if it's located here, can they, they don't have to do the closest substation, though, right? I mean, they can go to the substation of Polley, right? I mean, do you?
To be honest with you, I have no idea how it ties in. I don't, I don't, I don't know any of that.
I think they can run the transmission lines anywhere they want.
I really can't speak to that. I don't know.
The only thing I know is that they needed to upgrade, but I don't know anything else about...
And that's changed too, because I was, we were told before that the first solar array that came online was going to be responsible for the upgrades of the substation. But now that, we were told at the last meeting, that's changed now.
So, it was whoever, the entity whoever wanted to put in anything over 150 had to do the upgrades. So, 150 goes down to 500, and so the individual who put that 500 array was going to be solely responsible for financing the upgrades to the substation, but then that was changed where everybody shared the cost, because the 150s were allowed to piggyback on that, and that really wasn't quite fair if one entity was paying for that upgrade and then everybody else got to benefit from it.
Well, isn't that a kind of a two-part question? One part is in relation to the substations here, and the other one is in relation to the total system being maxed out. Is that what we're, we're talking about, both of those things?
I think you're correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Joe?
I just wanted to return to, was it either the 23rd meeting or the meeting on the 9th, when we heard from one of the solar project developers? And I think that person was asking for us to designate that site as a preferred status, and I think we asked Planning Commission to consider that. Do we owe a response to that developer at this time if we consider the avenue that Janet is recommending?
Sure, we do. Yep.
So, are you asking the Planning Commission to draft a response up? Because the Planning Commission is the first, or are you taking on yourselves to do that?
I guess, I think that communication should, should come from the select board, perhaps via the town manager.
Sure, okay. Okay, anything else, gentlemen? So, in summary, the Planning Commission is asking for an eight-month moratorium, is that correct? And a review by the town attorney as to the language? Did I miss something else here? I think, I kind of think I did, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I want permission to speak to V L C T, just to make sure that the language that I'm using within the moratorium itself is appropriate, and I want to hand it off to you instead of coming back to the board.
Okay.
And then you speak with council, and see if council has anything to say about it. And if, if there's no objections, then if there remains, who's the chair can sign off on it, and so I'm not exactly sure how to publicize it.
Yeah, you may, you may get that information from the town attorney as to the legality of publicizing and so on.
Right, so that's why I need to speak to V L C T to ask all those questions.
Sure. Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Whoops, Blaine, I got to go back again.
I was just going to say, I think we might be in a better position if the select board adopted, made the decision to accept the recommendation for a moratorium. Is there any reason why that would not work equally well, if not better?
No, I mean, I don't have any objections to that. I just, I just really want to make sure that it's done correctly, and I need to access V L C T, and I need to access...
Absolutely.
You know, to make sure that the, so I think preliminarily, preliminary vote, you could, so if the town manager has to draft up an answer to M H G, that he has something to put into the body in the context of the letter.
Well, then could we then adopt a motion to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, subject to clarification by the town attorney? Does that make any sense at all? Okay.
Okay, when you say eight-month moratorium, who's locked in now and who's locked, will be locked out?
Well, anybody who's looking for a sign-off letter for a first...
Do you know who's locked in now? I mean...
The two that are pretty much complete.
Sandlot.
No.
Green Lantern.
Green Lantern.
Behind, behind.
Dollar General.
Behind Dollar General, yeah.
And the other one is the one that's next to Hubbard and Forge. Those, to my understanding, are complete, and I believe Hubbard is on, excuse me, I shouldn't say Hubbard, and Sandlot Solar is online, but, and that's the other thing, too. I want to be able to put in this, when we sign up these preferred sites, I would like to know when the switch goes on and says, "We're live." I think we should, I think a town, even though the town doesn't really have any jurisdiction, it's over the landowner and the company that's putting the solar array in, but I think that the town should know. I think it should know for safety reasons, because if there's a fire, I have no idea what the fire department does with, if a solar array catches on fire, I...
Stand back. I'll keep everybody away.
There you go. So I, I think we have a right to know, just for the safety of the staff, of the town. So I'd like to have something rewritten a little bit. So I know I probably should have thought of that two years ago, but we could do it with, Dollar General is not up. It's not online.
No.
They weren't online?
They weren't online when we went down there for their call a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? We ready for a motion, gentlemen?
Yep.
We've had a motion yet.
No, we haven't had a motion yet.
We're getting, we're getting ready, we're getting closer.
We're doing a motion to allow Janet to collaborate with V L C T? Is that it?
And Green Mountain Power.
Well, weren't we, weren't we talking about having a motion to enact an eight-month moratorium, subject to...
Let's do that one first.
Subject to clarification with the town attorney as to language? Something to that effect. Is that what you want to do, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, then make the motion.
Zach's...
Now there's pause.
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work this through.
Okay.
Okay, I'll just wing it. Make a motion that we approve an eight-month moratorium for all solar projects, subject to the approval of a contract?
No.
Or an agreement? Okay.
No.
What did I miss?
Sorry.
Nope.
Can I take your legal opinion?
Okay, subject to...
Kind of take what Joe Mar just said.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure I remember that anymore. I would, I would have inserted the word new.
New.
Or adopt a moratorium, any new solar projects within the town, and ask the Chair of the Planning Commission to submit language formalizing that position so that it can be reviewed by the town attorney.
That has not been given for first, so you can sign off.
Can we just roll that, and I'll second it?
You'll second, okay.
Okay. You got all that, right?
Got that one?
I sure do.
Huh?
I said, "I sure do" on tape.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
But I'm only going to vote no because I think that the decision is premature until we see the language in the moratorium, and we have the opportunity to review the documentation and get someone answered. Questions answered. I'm not categorically opposed, I just think the decision is premature.
Okay, any other no votes? If not, the vote's four to one, okay?
So, I just have one clarification here. So if I speak with V L T, do they charge, do they charge a ton if I speak with them?
No, that's not what they do, is.
No, they're, that's a, if you call and ask to speak to their legal person, I think that's extension two, but don't hold me to that. You'll either get, you'll either get a receptionist, or you'll get, you'll get a human being, or you'll get a...
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't inferring any fees that are outside of our budget or whatever.
If it's outside there for review, they'll tell you that you should consult with the town attorney anyway.
Just call the phone number on the website, and you'll either get a human being that'll help you, or you'll get a menu that will tell you where to go.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Warning approval. That is the warning that we had received, and new items will be added upon receipt of petitions and approved separately at a later date, and I believe the deadline for that is...
Twenty-seven.
No, not for the, not for these, I don't think.
It's forty...
Sixteen?
Twenty-six. It's, it's Thursday, whatever Thursday.
This Thursday.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth for these, yeah.
Forty-seven days, or forty-five days, whatever, Nedder said.
Forty-five days prior to the election.
Before the election.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that we accept and approve the Town of Cassleton warning as presented to date, subject to addition of any items by petition.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Articles forty through fifty-five, some have question marks, some do not. They all need question marks.
Good catch.
Want to add that to it? Obviously.
I didn't go through and mark down which ones didn't have question marks, but I know it was in this block of the one.
Yep.
I think it's...
Yeah, there was, there was a handful of them that I caught.
Well, why doesn't someone start at the beginning and see if there, what, what ones need question marks?
Yeah, I'll do that now.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, okay. You getting this, Mike?
Yep.
Forty-four. Okay.
Fifty-two.
I think fifty-two needs it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
That's it.
Got them.
Okay, so, anyone find any others?
No.
Mr. Chairman, do I need to amend my motion to add those corrections?
Yeah, just to add the question marks to those, and make, make it legal, or not, if not, we'll hear about it.
So I'm going to amend my motion to include necessary corrections as discussed.
Okay.
You need another second?
No.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. Motion to accept with the corrections as indicated or as discussed. Any other discussion on that? Not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Didn't hear any negative votes. Okay, first-class liquor license approval for the Iron Lantern.
Make a motion, we approve the first-class liquor license for the Iron Lantern as presented.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Mike, did you say there was another portion to this that was not included in our pocket? Did I overhear that?
That is correct.
Does that need to be on a separate motion, or can we include that in this one if we knew what it was?
I don't have it, so I would, I talked to Nedder today, it can be moved to the next one. It's not going to penalize them at all.
So what's the difference between the two, that one you don't have, and that's what we have in front of us?
It, one was, if I remember, I'm trying to remember exactly what class you said, if it's class, like, two and three, you know, it's a different class.
One's for alcohol, and one's for, like, malt beverages?
Yeah, wine and beer.
First class for malt and vinous beverages.
Okay. Any other questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have some to sign, Jim? I remember rightly. How to practice and done it all in.
Yeah, we got to sign this one, too.
Yeah, certificate of mileage, that's the next one.
There was no change.
No, I know, I was just wondering, it says clerk, there's, I guess we don't, but there's a sticky on it to sign it.
There is, it says, part three says, "Selectman, Alderman, trustee's signature."
Yeah, above clerk.
The town clerk has to sign it as well.
Okay, yep, okay, I see it, no, yep. I'm sorry, did you have something under, something that's not on the agenda under citizens' concerns?
I do.
Well, I didn't mean to go by, I'm just, I'm sorry. I'll come right back here.
We deserve to the end of the meeting, so...
I'll be glad you...
No, I'll be happy to do it right now. If you're ready, I'm ready.
Just let us, yeah, just let us finish this up.
You can insert that anytime.
I gather you don't have anything, Heath?
We have, Mike sent you one thing.
It's on, it's on...
Okay, that's, we've got that on the agenda. Okay.
Manager's report.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, so my name is Joe Manes, I'm at, I live at 173 East Crystal Haven, by the way.
Yep.
And I've got a situation in front of our house, actually covers two hundred, I was saying, I don't know if you saw that today, Mike.
Yeah, I printed it out, yeah.
And we got a real mess going on there. I don't know what's happening to the road there, but after every freeze and thaw, we have a ginormous mess of, we're probably about a good ten inches of ruts right now. And it's, it's about a hundred, probably about a hundred feet worth of roadway. And it's getting worse with every, every thaw. There's no standing water anywhere around the road, so I don't know what's holding that water. I don't know if it's the material that's in the road, it's really just muck right now. And now that it's frozen, now we've got like these ten-inch ruts. And I know, Mike, you want to tackle that in the spring, but need to get something done in the interim. I don't know what it is. I mean, right now, it's barely passable.
I, thank you for sending this stuff to me today. I did print it out, and so what I did today is I sent a message to Brian Sanderson and Eric House from District Three, V Trans, asking them to please come over and help me, give me some guidance through this. This road, I believe, and talk, even talk with Paul, it's going to be a subbase issue. So, it's not something that's easily solvable right now, because we're going to tear the thing out to get, and what I, what I asked Brian and Eric to come over for is to look at the composition of the soil and the water table. Those are the two things that I think are, are causing the problem. So, I did send that out to him right after I got your message, asking them to come over as ASAP to help me through this, so we can figure out, there's something we can do.
I know you graded, you know, right after, you know, the last incident in December, but, you know, this is worse than it was then.
Yeah, I saw, I got both the pictures, and so, but I'm, I've enlisted, I've asked for the help of V Trans to help us through this. Paul and I have talked about it, and short of tearing the, tearing the road out right now...
Yeah, it looks like it's packed underneath, and then there's just a bunch of really soft soil on top of that.
Yeah.
It just doesn't drain.
Yeah, what I said to him today is, I said, "It may take some stone in there to, to try to chink it back together," but the stuff that gets put on the roads, too, the sand over the years, that top layer is, it's not gravel, it's road sand, and it doesn't hold up well to water. So, every, and I think there's some neighbors of yours that complain that the, the height of the road has changed over the years, and...
Yeah, I don't know if that has much to do with it. It's, it's just this one section, and last year was worse, I mean, the whole, the whole road, but it was just, I think, just a different element, you know, involved. But this year, it's, it's really concentrated to about a hundred-foot section.
And I, I sent it to Paul about having him to look at it, to grade it, and see if we need to put stone in there to get it so it's stabilized, I guess, but, but I, we are following up, as soon as I got your email, I sent it to Brian, so...
Okay, great, appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to comment, I went up to there last night, and I had the gun to get through, and I, I'll be honest with you, I didn't go back through it, and I have a[1733.84] a doctor, I went up, the road closed, and I wasn't, I wasn't the only one that went up the road closed.
Yeah.
Just, it's bad, and what I don't understand is, it's just a section, it's like having these three tables together, and it's this middle section that's like gone away, so I don't know if there's a spring right there, because before and after, it's fine.
The thing is, though, if, if it was a spring, I would think there'd be water on each side of the road, it's bone-dry on the side of the roads. There's no water there.
Not to disagree with Joel, but I...
No, I, I know, I'm not, certainly not an expert.
I have a spot in my driveway where it's about that, but... Maybe that's what it is. Swear to God, it goes to China, on both sides of my driveway, it's perfectly dry, so it's just that one spot's away.
We have roads that like all over, Cory Lane's got two spots on it that, no matter what time of year, it seems to be worse than others, so we'll investigate it.
Yeah, I've been there sixteen years, and really, last year was the first time something like that happened, and this year, it's much worse.
Yeah, agreed.
Now, what do, just, it's on the same subject, same area up there, I had a neighbor tell me that they had to get a permit to put their driveway in, but nobody else on that road had to have a permit to put their driveway in, what's, what, do you know, what do you know about that?
I, where are we talking, on...
East Crystal Haven.
Yeah, I, what I found out is, over the years, depending on when, what time they're, they ask to put it in, we have records going back to a certain point, and then there's nothing, so...
Must be a certain time where they had to get a permit to put a driveway in, or whatever, but then after that, you didn't have to have a permit to put it in.
Well, now we do, we, every time somebody puts one in, we have it now, but they're going back in time, there are, like, today, we went to Drake Road, there is no record of a, of a curb cut for that property up there, because it was back in the seventies, so, it just...
That road's probably been in there since the fifties.
Yeah.
When it was subdivided.
So there, back then, there may not have been a permit.
No, I doubt there would be back that far.
V-Trans has stuff going back then, but not on...
There's no new driveways in that area.
No. Okay, anything else on this?
Did I answer the question, Bob?
Uh, pretty much, yeah, I just, they asked me, and I didn't really have an answer for them.
I'll let you get back to work, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, signing the annual certificate of highway mileage, it's my understanding there's nothing different?
There isn't.
Inter of mileage and so on?
Zero change.
Is there a motion?
Can we approve as presented, Mr. Chairman?
You sure can.
In a second.
That's a motion.
Okay, motion is second to accept it as presented. Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We all got to sign that, do we?
Looks like it.
Yes. Yeah?
And so you're aware, V-Trans did send out their grants for paving and stuff, so this ties into that, but I don't know how many miles of Class Two or Class One out roads we have, but, um, that's going to be come and due, and you'll see that come before your next meeting. Hopefully, we get the full one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for paving.
Mike, do you come to us for the recommendations of what roads you're going to pave and what roads you're not going to pave?
I will, I'll, I'll come with you, before we put it up to bid.
Yep, thank you.
We do have the holdovers from last year.
Yeah.
That didn't get done, so...
But they got to be first, right?
They'll be paving in town all summer long.
Yeah.
Well, those will have to be done before June thirty, right?
No, as long as they're not billed till after.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get the billing straight.
We may, we may not, depending on what the weather is, I don't know when they're going to be able to start, but it's assuming they'll be able to start sometime in late April, we may. Yeah.
That's true, you're right, Heath.
All his or carry, all that stuff's carry.
Yeah, that's, we can carry that over.
Okay, next item, a request from the Poltoni Meadowie Natural Resources Conservation District for a donation, contribution, the letter is suggesting five hundred dollars.
It, just so you're aware, if, if you don't know who they are, Hillary Solomon, I mean, American nature, her name, but, um, Poltoni Meadowie Natural Resources Conservation District, um, has donated a lot of time and effort to the Town of Castleton, Eaten Hill East was a project they paid for, um, Eaton Hill, no, no, you know, transfer station, and they're also, I was talking with Hillary about, um, we have that problem with bank destabilization on Sucker Brook, um, they're willing to come and, and help us with that as well, because they, they have a nursery, and they have plants and, and stuff like that, so, it's a, they've, they've given us, I can tell you, way more than five hundred dollars, if you're looking at a comparison of what we get out of it, they've given us, you know, tens of thousands of dollars.
Do they, do they ask this of all the towns, or just in certain areas?
I don't, I don't know, Bob, to answer that.
I just care.
Probably anybody in their district, I would imagine.
Yeah, which is up and down Route Thirty, right, I mean...
Yeah, that Poltoni Meadowie, Middletown, Paulette.
Okay, is there a motion regarding the request for a contribution?
For discussion purposes, um, I will make a motion that we make a contribution of five hundred dollars to the Poltoni Meadowie Natural Resources Conservation District.
Second.
Great, motion second, all right. Comments, questions?
My first question is, um, where would the five hundred dollars come from?
Good, I don't have to ask that question.
Anticipating that you'd ask that, um, we have, um, we have money in town lands that could be used for, out of that, we have way more than five hundred dollars, um, that we could spare the five hundred dollars out, for this to, take it out of that, because that's what it's going to be used for anyway, on town lands.
I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, my second question is, when they come up and help us with, say, the transfer station, or the potential help that we'll get with Sucker Brook, do we actually have to pay for their services?
Uh, no, most of the time, everything that we're able to do is in kind work, so the stuff at the transfer station, the highway crew did the work, and we are able to credit their hours, labor, equipment and stuff to the in-kind portion, like twenty percent, or whatever it, it ends up being, um, so, same with Eaton Hill East, um, we pay for some materials, like culverts, we agreed this time, we'd pay for culverts and be reimbursed, um, just so we could get them quicker, but, um, it, it is, uh, everything, since I've been here, everything's been paid in kind.
Let me rephrase the question, if Hillary comes up and looks at our book and comes up with recommendations and creates a plan, do we have to pay for that?
No.
Okay, that's my question.
No, she, she's a...
She has quite a extensive, different engineer support that comes along with that service, not just her as the Meadowie operator, but the engineer company, one on Burlington, she was using Jason...
Evan Fitzpatrick is one of them.
Yes.
All right, I'm all set, Jim.
Okay, any other questions? No, no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Manager's report.
Sorry, guys, I, I apologize, I didn't get this to you, um, I ran up against, uh, no, there's no excuses, I just ran out of time to do it, so, um, there's, there's only a couple of things on there, um, that I was, I was looking for some, uh, some guidance on, on the fir-, on page one, um... The ordinance for the transfer station, I, I don't even think it's applicable now, I went back and reread the minutes of the meeting about changing the ordinance to say that the, the private haulers only one time per year have to turn in their number of customers by town, not by name.
Right.
So I've rewritten that, I'll get it to you, um, next meeting, but I, I, after I went back and reread it, um, I, I changed the wording to reflect that, but I can give it to you next meeting. And then I can deal with our one private hauler.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman, about that? Uh, if, if we are changing an ordinance, uh, is that something that has to go before the voters?
I don't think so.
According to VLCT, when you did the, um, animal control stuff and that, it, it has to be posted.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to go back before the voters, or to the voters, I'm sorry.
Any other questions on this part? Okay, Mike, proceed.
On page two, under Phase One easements, um, so I kind of explained that, uh, if we are able to get Phase One of the sidewalk project jump-started, which it seems like that's now certainly within our grasp, after talking with Wenda Byrd and talking with, uh, Kevin Maholland, um, that, my, my concern is we're going to have Route Four A from Drake Road to the Corners tore up again this summer, and from Route Thirty, or from the Four Corners up here to the Health Center, um, I'm not sure, if you read through what I said, I basically, mobilization and demobilization of a contractor costs a, a load of money, um, they're going to probably not want to split their, their, um, time, like, hey, let's get, what we can do before Memorial Day weekend, and then wait till after Labor Day, and to try to have the least amount of impact to businesses, but I am sympathetic to, um, Mohammed Balil at the Corners, because this will be the third year that he gets his business disrupted more than anybody else, um, because he happens to be right in that prime cor- part of the intersection, at the intersection, so, looking for your guidance, um, I can ask the questions whether or not, um, a contractor would be even interested in bidding on a job that has split, um, timeframes, uh, I haven't, I haven't approached him yet until after I talk to you, um, but, but let's say that aside, and, um... Your feelings on when this project, we would want, uh, we put out a start date, I mean, if they start as early as possible, when the, the frost is out of the ground, we're probably talking sometime in April, hopefully, um, and they'd be done by midsummer versus waiting till later in the year, because if we wait till after Labor Day, I'm, I think we're really putting ourselves at a disadvantage, after, after what I saw happen this past year, and the stalling and the, or the, the impediments to getting the thing done. And that said, we all can agree, I think, that the public hearing that didn't happen was part of the, the problem that we had with, uh, certain residents or landowners, so it would be imperative that, once the drawings are, are done by the architect, that we have a public meeting to discuss what this project would entail, um, so that their questions can be answered with the contractors and V-Trans here. Is that, that, I, I know that that was the problem last time, is they had no say and didn't understand what was happening to their property, um, so, we would have to have the public hearing, it would, it'd be criminal if we didn't.
That was the lion's share of the problem, and we had no experience in that, and we know better now.
Okay.
Less residences, though.
Okay, is that it, Mike, on that, on that part?
On that one, it is.
Something on it?
Yeah, I didn't know if you guys want to have input to it, I mean...
I, I haven't read this carefully, Mike, but...
Yeah.
I think I see in here that you are recommending that it not begin until late August, is that correct?
Is, not, not wait until Labor Day, but wait until more the end of the summer, as far as we can push it with a contractor.
But you're not, you would not favor, uh, like, an early April start that was completed before the middle of the summer?
The only thing, Joe, I worry about there was the weather, in that timeframe, becomes a little bit unpredictable, and with a lot of rain, they don't work.
So you're not suggesting or recommending a two-phase?
I'm not.
You're recommending starting in August, is that it?
Or somewhere farther down the road in the summer, rather than early in the spring, just because of the weather.
Okay.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at, from start to finish?
I haven't, I haven't even talked to the contractors about that yet, but if you look at what we, if you took out the, the problems that we had with personnel or people or landowners, um, the project wouldn't have, wouldn't have lasted as long, but probably talking, probably say sixty-plus days, sixty-six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion on it?
Do we need a motion?
Sure.
Whatever you want, I just, for your guidance, that's all.
Looking for guidance.
I would move that the Select Board express its support for the manager's recommendation that the timing of, uh, the Phase One sidewalk project be scheduled for late summer of 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any other discussion?
Uh, just one comment. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, um, prohibit the town manager from scheduling it in early spring if that's the only available option, that, I would rather have it done at a more inconvenient time than not have it done at all, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I want, I, my desire would be, I can't speak for the entire board, but my desire would be to have this project move forward, and, um, it, and if that's inconvenient to the business owners, we'll try to minimize that, but sooner or later, we're going to have to bite this bullet, so...
If I may, Chairman?
Sure.
Last year, one of the complaints was, um, why did you have to wait till school's in session, because school buses and delays and stuff like that, because of the construction around the Castle and Corners area, but, it's, we're going to hit it either way, we're going to hit it early in the spring, and we're going to hit it in the fall, and if we did in the middle of the summer, now we're impacting their businesses when there's late traffic and everybody around here, so, I, it's like damned if you do, damned if you don't, I'm trying to do it so the weather would have the least amount of impact, because that impacted the, the project last year.
Any other comments, questions?
So then, should we...
Bob?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So then, should we amend the motion to give the town manager...
Flexibility?
Flexibility on, instead of just saying late summer, just give him complete autonomy on deciding when to start the project?
Well, it's also going to depend on the contractors.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, well, depend on them.
Well, they're going to come to us, usually typically, and I'll say typically, I won't say everybody, I'll say typically, they'll give you a better price in the spring, because they're trying to jump-start things going, so that you, a lot of times, you'll get a good, a better price, but you also pay for it, um, through cost overruns, like this past year, um, if you look at what we have for cost overruns, it didn't probably save us any money in the long run, because of time.
Okay.
I say we give Mike complete autonomy on this project.
How do you feel about that?
Yeah, because he'll come back to us before he signs his name on the document.
Come back anyway.
Yeah.
I will state that I agree with Mike, that trying to do it as a split with two mobilizations will...
Going to cost you more.
It's going to cost us more.
Right. Want to withdraw that other motion? Motion's withdrawn, second withdrawn?
Second withdrawn.
Have a new motion?
Make a motion we give the town manager complete autonomy, uh, on deciding when to start the Phase One of the sidewalk project.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move on, Mike.
Thank you, gentlemen, uh, page three, um, this is referenced, it's at the very top of the page, B, where it says Jeff provided me, um, that, the Kubota tractor that we have down at the sewer plant, um, is in, um, serious need of some TLC, and what I mean by that is, uh, a lot of it's rotting, um, a lot of it's through our own fault, and through, and some of it's just through age, it's a nineteen ninety-seven four-wheel drive, fifty-four hundred Kubota with, and the, the good thing about it is the hours on this machine are only one thousand and sixty-nine hours, that's extremely low for something of that age, um, so it hasn't had, it hasn't been put to the wringer, but it has been exposed to age and the elements, um, and salt and stuff like that, so, what I'm recommending is, um, to repair that Kubota, rather than go out and looking at a new one, because I, I started pricing new ones, and with, our, our, just to summarize this thing, our Kubota has a front-end loader, and it has a hitch on the back, and we have an excavator, little excavator arm, um, the price to buy a new one without the little excavator arm in the back, just with the, the bucket, no cab, um, ours has a cab on it, is thirty-nine thousand dollars, it's just, it's cost prohibitive, and I would rather fix this, I talked to Jeff, I've talked to Bob Ward, um, I think that we can expect below ten thousand dollars, I called the, the dealer today up in, uh, Pittsford, Townline, and, um, it's, we're looking probably under ten thousand dollars to get this stuff replaced, and I've, I've spoken to Jeff about the garage and putting it in the garage, so it's out of the elements, um, not storing the salt, um, that he uses to sprinkle on the, on the driveway, stored in it, so it doesn't rot the bucket out, so, I guess I'm seeking from the Select Board to fix it rather than a new one, um, and I, I don't have a dollar figure to give you at this point, but I'd like to move forward with getting those, I got a quote right now for forty-four hundred dollars, and that doesn't count the cab, so I got it, I called him today, I said I need the quote for the cab, I didn't get it before the end of the day, um, but, maybe it's not even a motion I'm looking for right now, or in action, I just, I'm just seeking your support to do it, and I'll come back to you with the final cost next meeting.
So you don't need action on it, right?
No, I think, I think it's premature, because I, I thought, I was hoping I'd have it by the, by the end of the day, but I didn't.
Okay, any, any questions for Mike on that?
Just one, their average is forty-nine hours a year, that's an hour a week, what do they do with that tractor for an hour a week?
It, in the summertime, it's, it's used, um, but what I've seen, it's used less in the summer than it is the winter, because they use it to haul salt up and down and sand the driveways and stuff like that, I mean, Heath, you may be able to talk a little bit more than I have about this, the summer use, because I haven't seen much of it.
The summer use has been a little, uh, their tractor got most of his hours when we were spreading our own sludge, because that was the tractor that did, at the end, was the tractor that did, at the end, they were cultivating the sludge in after it was spread on the field.
Oh, wow.
That's where it gained most of his hours, so probably an average an hour a week doesn't even get that anymore.
Any other questions?
Well, that, that $10,000, that, do I read that right? That includes Bob's time, too? Or no?
Oh, that was just for the, the parts, and, yeah, parts and repair. So, yes, Bob's time. But if Bob can't fix something, we may have to send it to, to get it fixed. The clutch is going on it, so that's, I think he can do that, he fixed the clutch in the big tractor.
He's capable of that.
So I guess here's the part where I'm going to be the hard, you know, what about this? What's the, what's life like at the transfer station if they don't have a tractor there, and what other options would there be?
Are we at transfer now, or are we at?
Sewer plant, I mean, I'm sorry, I've misspoke.
It's a lot of handwork, but then if we do need that thing, if they need to move pumps around and stuff like that, they got some stuff to move things around on site. That's really about it. It's not used to spread the sludge anymore, so it's not, that's why, that's why I think it's, it's important to keep it, because it'd be used by, by, for other things, but I don't think it's important enough to buy a brand-new one.
Tobacco on the back, but like if they get a pump, a buried pump station? They can use tobacco, because they can just drive it there, they use tobacco, dig the pump, pump station out, do that with, it's, it's the convenience of having it there.
Okay, so you'll get back to us on this? Anything else? Dick, do you have something?
No, I was just going to say, so it's like my 20-inch channel locks, I don't use them very often, but when you need them, you need them.
Okay, all righty. Request to purchase 3/8 Crunchstone, you got that one, Mike?
Yeah, and there's, I'm going to stick with this one, because I got some information from Paul subsequent to all this being done. But, for right now, that, and I brought some stuff, basically, this is what we're looking at right here, gents. It's, it's no fines in it, there's no silty materials that, we already have that in that bad, in that poor quality sand. This is going to allow us, when it gets put down on these dirt roads, it has, it's, it's not flat, it's got rounder surface to it, and it, when, when it gets coated with freezing rain or whatever, it sticks above it. But we're, we're putting stuff down on, on the road right now, that if it's wet, or there's runoff, it just washes it off. It's like, it's like powder, it's like talcum powder. And you know what talcum powder's like when it gets wet. So, we've, we've been, I think I told you guys this a year ago, we have that bad sand, we got about 1,000 yards of it left. This, 30% of this into it will allow us to have it be effective, but we can get rid of it. We don't have to keep using it as an excuse to, why not to put it down? Because it's kind of useless.
What about tires picking it up and taking care of windshields?
Well, this is on dirt roads, so it's going to be less apt to be flying down the road and this stuff bouncing, bouncing around. It's not used on the paved roads.
Okay, okay.
A regular sand spec has that side stone.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this? Need a motion? Where would it come from, Mike?
From Carreras.
No, I'm talking about the money.
Oh, it's in their budget, it's in their normal.
In our budget, okay.
So you just need a purchase order approved at some point in time, right? You don't really need a motion from us.
Well, it's, it's the cost, because it's 4,650, it's above my threshold to just sign off on it without you guys approving it, so.
Why don't, why don't we approve it, and then the purchase order comes through and it's already approved if this is what.
Is it for Hatticus?
No, it's not for Hatticus, it's for Carreras.
Okay.
It's coming from Carreras?
Because we searched around, I have stuff here from Hatticus, and it doesn't meet the, it's flat, so it, it's just going to lay flat on the ground, so.
Can we get a motion on this?
Do they, do they deliver it, Mike, or we have?
No, I, I put in there, we're going, it's $2,000 if they want, if, if we have them deliver it, so it's best if we, and Paul, when I first talked to Paul, he said, we'll have to go get it. So it's in, I think it's in either IRA, when you go, was it West Rutland?
Claringdon Avenue.
Claringdon Avenue, yeah.
It's on, that's on Shrewsbury Road, North Shrewsbury Road, or whatever it is?
No.
It's not that one?
One on Claringdon Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Like 133 or 140, or whatever the hell's out there.
Yeah, they're both out there, yep.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the purchase not to exceed $4,650, and approve the purchase order when it comes through?
So moved?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Next, Mike.
Okay, turning the page halfway down, under C, I said after speaking with VLCT Staff Attorney Carl Andier, what you guys asked me about with S-54, the marijuana bill that's still in the House. After talking with our attorney, or, I mean, getting an opinion from the VLCT Staff Attorney, it's not law, it's, when it comes out, it's going to have plenty of times for towns to hold public meetings, whatever they need to do, so he highly encouraged us to not put it on there unless the town was looking for some type of advisory thing, like, you know, if you want to put it out there. But, he, his opinion was it's going to cause a lot more confusion, and he recommended we don't put it on the, on the warning.
Okay.
So we don't do that?
No. Don't have to. Next, Mike, unless somebody else has a question.
No, if nobody has any questions, the, the last page, the last item number 10, where it says Fire Department. I got the chief here, so I don't even need to talk about it, he can, it's basically what he's asking for, was to buy some portable radios with money from Sentry, from a hazmat incident on the highway, but go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, well, you guys have been here, Lionel, so you've seen three or four of these this year already. It was money that was paid to us for our labor out, this was the last one out on the highway, about by the dirt pole off there. Truck went out the road, lost its fuel tank, we were out there for a hazmat cleanup. This is what our, Mike gave you the dollar amount, 1,800 and...
4,950.
4,950, there you go. I get that paper right side up, Mike, I can tell you. It would, we'd just like to buy some extra radios for the, with that money for the town, and that's, like I said, I'd come to ask you guys if you'd allow us to spend it, and I'd ask, I always take this to the vote of the membership before I go ahead and do it, because it was the members that actually earned the money, so.
I assume you already have portable radios?
We have some, yes, this is just an add-on, it's an addition, we, we have some in the trucks, but we are short a few, we could use some more, we've got pretty good membership. It's nice to have, at least every team to have one, and sometimes that doesn't happen with the ones we got right now.
And there are some trucks that leave the barn that do not have portable radios in them right now. So when the member leaves the truck, Bob?
Yep, I listen.
When the member leaves the truck, they don't have the means to communicate.
And this, the stuff at the live burn, they really talked about, you know, every firefighter that goes inside of a structure should have it, because that's the only way to make a call for help, for a Mayday call, and if you don't have one, it just puts that person at a severe disadvantage to get help if needed.
Okay, so is there a motion on this?
I would move that we approve the purchase of portable radios for the fire department for an amount not to exceed $1,849.50.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. That's it, Mike?
There's one thing, the chief's here, that he wanted to bring up, so.
Yeah, I could come back to you next month, it didn't, we had a vote last week, and our officers are re-elected, it used to come to you guys to be approved. The officership didn't change, it's the same as it was before. I didn't know if you would entertain a motion to approve it tonight, or I can get it put on the agenda next month if you'd like, or next meeting if you'd like.
Do we need to see it written down?
Yeah, well, don't you usually bring it in, and we just, we usually routinely, routinely approve it, I mean.
Yeah, it's usually just written on the agenda, that the approval of the officership.
Yeah.
Have we ever had a public comment on that, to your knowledge?
Not that I know of, my 15 years.
I don't remember, you know, I've been an officer for 10 or 12 years, and I've been on the Select Board for six, I don't recall it ever being discussed, so. I would need to recuse myself from the actual discussion and decision, though, because I am one of those officers.
Okay.
Want to do it now, or want to wait?
Seems like a formality, right?
Formality.
Just, why don't you just bring it in to us, give us the list, and?
It'd be nice to have it in the minutes, so if somebody went back through it, they could say.
It's in the minutes, it's in the minutes. Okay, is that it? Heath?
Okey-dokey, moving on. Select Board's comments or concerns? Zach?
I don't think I have anything tonight.
Okay, Dick?
I'm all set.
Bob?
Well, I think, Mike, you covered it already, because I was going to, thinking about the town clock that's been not right since before Christmas, but I see Joe got to you.
He did, I'm glad he did, because the word I got, where, how it was located to fix it, wasn't even close.
Yeah, I didn't know either, but I was going to bring it to your attention to find whoever put it in, or whatever.
I did.
Yeah.
And they, they led me in a long, wrong way, but that's why, so it's been fixed, the date, I'm, I got a call into the company to how to fix the date on the timer, but that's it.
Perfect.
Joe?
I'm all set.
All set?
Okay, warrants for approval. Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0113R for $650. Warrant 0113 for $80,185.34. Warrant 0109 for $21,835.56. Warrant 0102 for $5,688.66. Warrant 1231 for $9,3213.59. Warrant 0109P for $16,245.80. Warrant 0102P for $14,884.84. And warrant number 1226P for $20,441.50.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? Anything in the warrants? Dispatcher warrants? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion, we approve warrant number 0110P for $678.15. Warrant number 0103P for $678.15. And warrant 1227P for $426.30. Second.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor?
Whoops, I've got to recuse myself.
Yeah, I just want to ask again, just for the record, why are those different amounts? I know you explained it to me, but I want it on the record.
Yeah, if you look at the, the last three pages on those, show the warrants, her, the gross wages are the same, so if you're looking at, no, there's no page numbers on it, so it's the last three pages in the packet of the, of those warrants, but it's $1,030.40. And then you can follow across with all the monies that were taken out of it, and if you look at the first two that were similar amounts, they were, you can look at what was, what was different, and if you look at the last one, the last page of that, federal withholding was changed. So it's, all it is is a change of elections of how much somebody wants to come out of their check. So, the, the dollar amounts, the, the, her, her wages are the same across all three of the warrants, it's just how much she has taken out.
But that, but we've seen, we've seen different amounts on every warrant, and does she do that on a weekly basis? She changes her deductions on a weekly basis?
Maybe it was getting toward the end of the, was this January?
I don't know, because it was, it was in the 400s, I just, I had a couple people questioning.
Beginning of the calendar year.
Yeah, but it wasn't the 400s in December, and now it's back to 600 something, but then the last one's back to 400 something.
Is it, what's the, I just, so I can answer the question properly, what is the concern? Did you, did you say?
They want to know why there's different amounts. If, if, if it's, if it's a flat salary, why do the amounts keep changing?
It is, if you look across it, her salary did not change across any, she just changed her withholding. It's because the first call was FWT, federal withholding tax?
I understand that, Mike, but I, I just, you're not really following me when I'm saying, these amounts, they keep, every time we get a warrant, these amounts keep changing.
Because she changed her, her federal withholding in the last one to take out more money.
Okay, but a month ago, they were 400, but now these, there's two that are back to 600 there.
She did, she just changed, if you look at the federal tax that she had in the previous two, it was only $95. So she changed it in one month from $95 to $296.
So she's changing it on a regular basis?
Well, again, as, as you get, it's personal, it's personal choice, I, I can't tell.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know, but usually you'd make changes at the beginning of the year, and that's it, for the whole year, and you do it.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I, I don't know either, that's why I'm asking.
Unless you have a salary change, maybe?
Yeah, and there's no salary changes.
No salary change?
Yes, that's the same.
Okay.
I'm just trying to answer the questions that.
Must be that somebody just wanted to give more to the federal and state government.
I got to get signed in, hold me up.
No, I get, I'm not, I can't go into the specifics of why someone wanted to change it.
No, 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 I'm not asking for that, I'm just.
Do you want a motion for the purchase orders while we're signing?
I'm ready. You want to move with that, Mr. Chairman?
By all means.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, we approve purchase order number 044455 to RM Headley Valves and Controls for a Uma SQ05.2 electric air actuator for Tank Number Two, I would assume sewer plant.
It is, it's the original one that was there, so it's for.
$2,415.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
Looked to me like you'd gotten at least three bids.
Yeah, he did on the back, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of them opposed, motion passes. We have one more, right?
We do. Make a motion, we approve purchase order number 044246 to the Department of Public Safety, I would assume that's State of Vermont, Department number 73816 for live fire burn training at the Vermont Fire Academy that occurred in October of 2019 for $2,530.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any discussion of this? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll go back to the last purchase order, there were not three bids, there's only one.
There's one on the back, another one on the back.
Yeah, it's, it's a, this is.
Explanation, I think.
This is a, kind of a sole source thing because of the age of it.
I misread when I went through it.
This, this one was the actual original one that was put in back in the 70s, so, until there's an upgrade to the system, we're stuck with getting parts from really a sole source on it, as per our operator.
You have 11, Zach?
Not even close.
Got three more.
Oh, okay. My apologies, Zach, I must have misread that.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Any, any need for recap or item follow-up? Seeing none? Any need for an executive session, Mike?
Yes, please.
For?
Personnel and contracts.
Make a motion, we enter into executive session with the board and the town manager for personnel at 8:10.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
For an executive session.